Okay, call the meeting to order. West Liberty City Council, Tuesday, May 7th, 7:31. Clerk, if you would like to read the census of who's here or take roll call.
Martinez?
Here.
Schultz?
McFerrin?
Here.
Dominguez?
Yep.
Freegan?
Here.
Okay, in the absence of Mayor Smith, I will go ahead and conduct the meeting tonight. So we are going to go ahead and move to the next line item, approval of agenda. Second. We've got motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda that which involves the council meeting minutes and the special city council minutes and the September quick treasures report. Motion to approve consent agenda. Second. Okay, all in favor? Sorry, that's right, I was racing through those. Does anybody have any discussion questions? For the consent agenda? Okay, hearing done, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to reports. Let's see, do we have City Engineer Leo Foley on or here? He did try to call me, so maybe he's on his way. Wait, my company a little bit late. Okay, well, we can move on to the the city staff reports. We go ahead and take a look at the staff reports. Is there any questions? Signage on that, please, guys. Okay, okay, so he may not make it. Okay. So, any questions? Discussion for the police department report? We've got the police department, we've got streets and solid ways. We've got your updates from the ministerial association giving you where the funding is at. Okay, yeah, there's an update on the ministerial utility count. And when you're ready, I'll quickly, I'll quickly go through my stuff. Okay, city manager? Manager's report, so and I may call on Ken a little bit because there's some things in here that the two of us have been working through. The, we have continued work on annexation requests that came in that I reported in April for the group properties. Ken Brooks and I held a phone conference with Dorsey and Whitney, we spoke with Amy York and John Danos to receive some guidance pertaining to the annexation. We had some questions around the hundred percent. If we were not able to obtain additional parcels along with this parcel, what were other options? So we reviewed eighty twenty and had some questions with annexation with the highway. It has been recommended that we proceed having meetings and conversations with the additional property owners surrounding that. So we can see if they would be willing to come in under the voluntary annexation along with group properties. And I reached out to set meetings, so Ken and I can meet. We can go over some opportunities with these property owners regarding, you know, property tax. How we can, you know, work with them and they can have a gradual, I think over a five to ten year period, five years, I think is what was recommended to gradually come on to the city's tax levy versus where they're at with the county. I know sometimes that's really important when you're looking at annexation and if they're not, you know, what's for them to come on board. The other part is, you know, city utility to be able to expand that city utility to those properties, eventually connecting them to the community with sidewalks. Along with then, you know, they would fall under an urban renewal. So if they look, if they're looking at expansion or building, you know, they could seek, you know, a payment or TIF with their projects as well. So we do have a meeting set this week with one and still waiting to hear from two others. Along with that, we, I've been in contact with Eric Furnas through Muscatine County Development. And on your desk, we see that there will be a public meeting on May 22nd. This is the, and I'm gonna call on Ken because I know Ken's been involved with this. Ken, would you mind talking to about the May 22nd and the land use?
Yeah, absolutely. So just like the city, every so often updates its comprehensive plan, Muscatine County is doing the exact same thing. It has been historically true that zoned agriculture land within Muscatine County cannot be developed for housing. There's some very strict guidelines of what it takes to build a place to live on a zone ag lot within the county. And so they want feedback from the communities within Muscatine County about what that looks like. And is that something that they should consider redefining? Right now, it's very difficult to very gut parcels of agricultural land. And as cities are finding it more and more difficult to build housing within the city limits, we have an opportunity to start building some housing developments in the rural part of the county, but it's not possible with how everything is. So they would like to give communities feedback. They also have some questions and wanna bounce some ideas off and receive feedback from community members regarding alternate energy sources, wind turbines, solar systems.
And also with that, then the next thing. Ken and I, when we have, Ken and I meet on Fridays, we do a weekly update with each other. We do have the housing study presentation available and and Ken is available to present that to council, we're gonna have to schedule a work session on June 4th. For that, I know Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem attended that conference in Muscatine and we went over all of the information, but I think there's a little bit more that Ken can, now that it's a complete presentation, there's a little bit more that he'll be able to to add to it. The hotel feasibility is complete. And again, Ken and I worked together on that with Jessica Jumper through that project, very, very impressed with our community. Fell in love, just, you know, could see what we see as far as the vision in our community and about the opportunities. And I mean, would you say, Ken, I think she was pretty excited and the, where we're at with the feasibility is unfortunately, the surveys, we had some slow survey turnaround. We probably could have used a little bit of different, you know, how do I wanna say this, some answers weren't weren't there where we needed them, even though we know that, you know, the need has been there because we do get, you know, input and we get asked for, you know, you know, lodging, but the survey just didn't show that when they were taken, how they were answered, like provided that. So at this point in time, you know, we have that information and then I've communicated, Ken and I will have Jessica present the feasibility study to new folks. And it also sets us to, you know, where are we at with the with the hotel piece? You know, where our need is at, what we need to do, what we need to grow. But definitely, she said, we have a wonderful community and we certainly see a vision of, you know, an establishment here, but we just gotta make the the data with our surveys and be able to fill up those rooms through a weekly basis, not just based on events. So would you say that pretty much covers it, Ken? Anything else?
Yeah, we ended up with a good number of responses from the business surveys that were sent out. Question the quality of services.
We'll continue to, we'll continue to work through that. And like I said, once you get the study yourselves and we're able to see through that, then I think we can also as a whole, can ask some questions that also may help Ken and I identify too what we need to be looking at. So just a reminder, May 17th is the week needs quarterly meeting and that will be the mayor's state of the city address and Brittany and I have a meeting and working on the speech for the mayor. I mean, he's got a nice outline and we're just filling in the blanks with the data on it. From a utility work that we've done last Friday, Cody Franklin, I think last Thursday, Cody Franklin, John Need and myself, we met with Solar. It's a company that we contract to maintain our our generators or for our generation. They had proposed a a pretty significant, I think it was like a twenty percent increase on the city's contract. And our electric superintendent, you know, put back on it. He looked at it, you know, we weren't getting that cost. I mean, your, the needs for our size and how much we use the generators does not equal out what the contract cost is. At that point in time, Solar agreed that they wouldn't impose any increase on us with the with the agreement. And the superintendent, they called a meeting to meet with Solar representatives. And so we we had a really good conversation. I I wanna say good job to John Need and Cody Franklin, they went through all of the data, all of the costs over the last 10 years. And they were able to identify that we've had this continual increasing cost, but our services haven't changed and our needs haven't changed, but we continue to get, you know, at this point in time, we're almost over fifty percent increased cost with no changes to what we're requesting in service. So we've asked them to go back and give us some options if we were just to, you know, have an agreement on a call to call basis with those costs look like and then also consider, you know, shrinking that contract so it fits the need of our municipality because these agreements are across the board. You know, agreements and there's a lot of larger facilities that, you know, those are good. But for us, because we don't have the same type of needs or the same type of, because they're not generating as much. We just wanted to identify what we were actually using. So that, in addition, is it's an eighty six thousand dollar a year maintenance contract. That that's what we're trying to weigh out. Originally, when they presented it to us, it was over ninety thousand. We were able to get, he was able to give it to eighty six, but then it's like, let's take a bigger look at what are we actually paying for? And they were very good about it, walked through with us to agree. And so we've got that back, working through that. Just a couple of community member or a couple of public things I had, Bob Smith had reached out to me just following up the drainage there at Morrison's Construction and outside of Pine's Little Home Village. It's continued, it's kind of creeped back up again. The heavy rains have shown, you know, it always has been kind of a drainage. There's been drainage issues there before. Danny Goodell went down and took a look at the at the area that we utilize and that easement to drain and it's gonna need to be cleaned out again and dug down. But he's also gonna fold some quotes to look at putting a drainage tile and cover it up. So we don't have to continue, you know, drudging it out that we actually have a an efficient drainage through there. He did speak with the Department of Transportation because that drainage is coming off of their highway. So it's it's coming off the highway correctly, it's going to the basin. It's just, again, that area is low and it's filled up with over, you know, silts and and grass and so, so our option is just take a look at it and remedy it for good versus just every so often filling that out. Is is the height something that we have to get a larger like circumference because the other one is is pretty outdated or? I know those are the things that Danny's looking into. Based on my understanding, it's that that the problem is, is that it's not necessarily the size of the drain. It's just how the how it drains into that area. And because of how the grass and and the dirt that comes off the road and everything washes in there, it fills it up quickly. And so just trying to look at an option, more of a permanent option versus this, let's just keep digging it out and digging it out. So so we'll have that in front, he's he's working on that. Miles Zimmerman also stopped by the office. I've gotta set up some time to have Adam and I go over. He just had some questions regarding the land behind his home. There's some right away usage in there. He just has some concerns with his mowing of it, there's some rust there. I just need to go over that information, I'm not sure when they occurred or but we'll have a conversation with them and and then he just had some leaked picked up items too that I followed up with Adam on it, just in case we had reached out to him and he would like to have that. Then I wanted to also say from the ambulance, the 28e agency, I've got no update for you. Based on my understanding where you've left off is we still don't have the attorneys working on the settlement agreements, but I've not received any updates from our attorney from no one from that. So I just wanted to let you know on that piece of it. I knew to let you know that our EMS coordinator, Tammy Wiggum, her last day was yesterday. She had planned to stay through till July 1st, but there was a change in plans. So her last day, and I just wanted to say thank you to her for all of her hard work. Our staff, over the last three years, she has worked very well with our staff as we have knew that we had some communications, we we needed to have those and we needed to build a process and you know, she was very much involved and assisted us to get to where we're at today. So I'm hopeful that we can continue on that process with whomever's gonna step into those shoes. And so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, Jennifer. And she's has another opportunity that she's she's been replying to, so. What is that a position we need to post? We're gonna have a meeting with with the executive board on Thursday morning at 10:00 AM. Oh, the ambulance? No, it's the fire executive board. Oh, yeah. So we'll have a meeting and then I'll I'll have a little bit more knowledge about where we're gonna go from there. Then I wanted to also, you know, say my appreciations. We've been very busy, I, our whole staff has been really busy. And Adam has done a wonderful job of handling all of the construction projects. He's been the go to person with Leo. Leo has been working very diligently with All American to get the seating, to get the hydro seating completed. We also have had some outstanding items and issues with Naughty Circle. And on a daily basis, I see that there's there's communication going on to get these things done. So I just wanted to add that, you know, the weather hasn't helped with seating, of course, but again, you know, I just see this continual, hey, if it's not gonna happen today, then what, you know, what have we got? Give me an update on it. So that's something that we haven't seen and it's it's looking much better. Along with that, I wanted to recognize, for Popper, she has put a lot of work into this info ten. She has primarily carried that duty herself. She's had questions for Nick and myself, but she has championed. And it's a lot of work with that software and like and and digging through those things and working. So I I just wanna make sure we're we recognize and know the work that she's been doing on that. Along with that, she's been carrying the codification. And so and we've got that on track and they're moving that forward. She's had a lot of conversations, we're now in the building pieces of the codification under the building inspector, so. And I'll I'll hand it over here to her in a little bit because I want her to be able to talk to you. But in, you know, in time, I mean, we've got a trip coming up to Washington DC. The council member Dominguez and the pro tem McFerrin and Ken Brooks. We will be leaving here in the next few days. Wow, it's here. And then on Monday, and I'm not gonna go into much detail because I I wanna give you guys the opportunity to talk about it. Talk about the program, but, you know, we'll have more news to share once we get out there and and do what we're gonna do. So outside of that, I think geez, Ken, we've been busy. Does that kind of get us close to what we've been doing? We've been working very closely, there's some staffing things that we've that staffing reorganization that's gonna be coming up that I'm gonna be working with the employee committee on. From the financial side of it, we've got the budget amendment, you've got the budget amendment in front of you, we'll set the date for that meeting. The chief and I've had meetings, we've been working through scheduling issues. Also, you know, some budgetary things. So again, I mean, we've got a lot of great things going on and a good kind of busy, so. For Popper's. You like to share your fun times that you're having with the info ten?
So I have had two meetings just this week. We are looking to try and push through the financial side coming in July. So we're working through thinking of some reconciliation stuff that we have that's outstanding that when it was first implemented, some of the packet bus that we have with the going through and getting all of our general line items to match the state so we can develop that over. I have four meetings this week to go over it as well. The cop fires sending me messages about every six days right now to give me more information and hopefully an update. I've worked with the defense department, we're looking at the control building inspector. We'll start getting into the utility stuff as well, so hopefully here shortly, as soon as something is changed or we can start meeting like a five minutes or three minutes again.
I also wanted to make mention that I attended a meeting that was brought to West Liberty by One Iowa Action and the Muscatine County LGBTQ organization. They've sort of partnered and they had a talk on May 2nd here at Community Center. And they basically spoke about their mission, purpose and explained a lot of information surrounding, you know, definitions and resources and also awareness of issues facing the LGBTQ community. So it was, it was very informative and I believe that going to, you're up to have another meeting here, but it'll be in Spanish. That was, okay, that was yesterday. Did anybody attend? Okay, I didn't know because it was really good information.
I think it's the first time they've offered it in Spanish, so we were another first for that.
Yeah, the person that gave the talk was from the Muscatine County Organization. This is Cetil Martinez, I think is her name, and she's fluent in Spanish, so she was very informative on a variety of topics surrounding that. So I thought that was a very good talk. I brought one thing. Oh. I had a meeting last night with Becky File on the with the state library, so somehow I was picked to participate in a survey to provide input as they're looking at, you know, mission driven and on what the what our libraries can offer. And so we had a really great conversation and was able to identify some things that we've all talked about about needs in our community, about, you know, our age group, like the ten to fourteen, like ten to fourteen age group that, you know, kind of is in limbo, not really necessarily having things available for them to do, maybe even their own space. You know, just talking about, you know, those options, what programs. And then I had to put my two cents in about funding too because, you know, these things. I said, we have, we have a wonderful library director and a team that's willing to do the work. Unfortunately, you know, with these continual budget constraints, it's it's difficult to to fund these. And I said, you know, we completely understand the emergency need and and our legal life, you know, our legal obligations for our emergency services, but we also could have emergency services when we're losing, you know, our folks in our community, we don't have the opportunity to have program available and and quality of life. So so we had a really good conversation about that too. So that is it. Excellent. Okay, we're gonna move on to vendor bachelors claims. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
For list number one. Motion, is there a second for this number one? Is there any discussion regarding list number one? For, let's see. Is that the that's the hundred twenty nine thousand three hundred thirty three dollars and twenty seven cents, is that? It's down there, okay. It's a combination, six hundred thirteen thousand one hundred sixty one and eighty seven cents. Sorry. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. What about vendor bachelors claims list number two, an amount of one thousand four dollars for Cardinal Signing Graphics? Motion, do I have a second? Any discussion? While hearing none? By the motion or by the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I abstain. All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, one. Let's see, four, three, four, one. With one abstention.
You're doing pretty good for having to do this once every year.
Kind of a tongue twister sometimes. Okay, we get to the good part now, public comments and correspondence. Is there anybody here or on line that would would entertain speaking about a concern or comment that they may have in the community? Yes?
Ken Brooks with Wealy, 118 Third Street. City manager Gertz covered two of the three things I wanted to talk about, but just quickly. Look forward to seeing everybody next Friday, the 17th, at noon here at the Community Center. We stated the city address and we will be taking a meeting, looking forward to that. Also looking forward to the fourth or whatever other day, we're gonna get together to discuss this important housing study. Lots of really good information in that that's gonna guide us moving forward. The last thing I wanted to do, back in January, Wealy was excited to announce a new addition to our team. And she's making it to a very first city council meeting tonight. So I wanted to introduce our community development specialist, Crystal Lemire, who didn't know I was gonna do that.
All right.
In just a few short months that she's been with Wealy, she's been invaluable in service to the organization. As a matter of fact, she's doing great leading some of her own projects, one of which you will see here very soon. June 1st and 2nd, Wealy will be hosting its very first first time home buyers education. Which is a three hundred and sixty degree package that's going to bring in individuals that are interested in purchasing a single very first home. They're gonna receive an in-person class which will qualify them if they're income eligible to receive some down payment assistance. But they're also gonna receive information on local folks here that can help with their housing needs. So vendors, they're gonna learn about plumbers and electricians and hand even and all these little things that don't necessarily know about being a homeowner before you're a homeowner. So we wanted to make sure that was part of this program. So Chris is taking the leadership on that. So Chris is taking the leadership on that.
Excellent, uh any other public comments? Uh, any public comments from council? Omar, anything? Nope. Josh, did you have any comment?
I have a couple things here. Um, I received some correspondence about. A goat being seen around town.
Um, okay.
So I reached out with city manager Gertz and Eddie, which is with Newsense, and he was able to track down the owner and. Address that, take care of it. Um, I also have, I received a few complaints recently. Um, just with the noise coming from Flamas.
Okay.
Um, I would say generally they're coming from the Calhoun Street area. So it's been kind of reaching.
Ah, where the wind blows.
Yes.
That's quite a block. Um, yeah, and the wind has really been whipped up lately, so it carries, carries a lot of.
I did refer, now just if it was kind of large disturbance that all the non-emergency line necessary and then. Officers can check on that. I also received another noise complaint from Kimberly Park. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the park open until, is it eleven?
I thought it was, was it ten or sundown?
I believe there was a group there, I think practicing pretty late and at night.
Okay.
And. I've received some comments that they witnessed um cleanup there at the corner of, what is that, Max and Rainbow near Dunn. Um, ongoing project, they're cleaning all that up. But they're going to see that refresh.
I was just gonna, um, I see Adams here and I know they, Adam's not here. If Adam was here, I know he has, you know, been out there with um the crews going through that cleanup. And um because we've had some, you know, contact um regarding, you know, the seating and and cleaning up after the project and. Um, as I stated, I mean, I do see that it, the communication is coming almost daily. Um, you know, to get these projects done, the proceeding done, um, anything else, Adam, to add to that?
Um, me and Kay is putting together a council list of final items to button up. Um, there's been some bickering back and forth about little stuff here and there. Some cleanup is on the, on the list to leave still. They found some minor cracks in concrete and there are no ones that's.
We've adjusted, um, you know, I I've adjusted with um Leo and the HMG um that, you know, I don't. I I would not support any other, you know, with some of this stuff. But they need to figure it out because I'm, as the city manager and it's a public structure, we wouldn't support any more change orders. Or costs coming to uh to the council simply because these are things that, um, you know, those are contractor, we have the engineers. We contracted them to receive these things, right, so um, yeah, it really needs to get, you know, figured out and handled between them.
The the final walkthrough the last week, the contractors, me and Kay and myself. And Leo completely understood that the city wasn't going to be having any more change orders or paying anything else.
Yeah, especially at the last minute because uh, I mean. They've had plenty of time to make sure that things have been in place and the fact that. As engineers, you know, that have been employed in some time, they should know what they're doing. So I don't anticipate seeing any change orders either, but. Well, and I mean, what Adam Myers discussion is, you know, interrupting it back to the engineers is. You know, I mean, these are learning lessons for us, we've not necessarily been involved in much. But now we're learning and then we'll just look for some more details when we go forward in these agreements. And, you know, and that checks and balance to identify that, you know, what's being communicated or what we're being told that we're going to receive in an agreement. That we're actually, that's what's going on, so so I think that, you know. Each time we have these projects, we grow a little bit more ourselves and and I think then just making sure that, you know, we're staying strong in that communication with those. Engineers and those contractors, that we're, our expectation is what we agree upon when we sign.
Otherwise, they'll always just bid low so they get the contract and then assume that we'll just keep adding to it, you know, which is not good.
But I mean, I do want to, I mean, again, I don't, I don't want to be, it's beautifully done, it's nice, um, we're ready to, you know, we want to get moving on the sidewalk. You know, we want to see that extension, you know, I mean, all those things are coming together and and the fact that we get to work with a local contractor. Um, you know, that's providing jobs to people who live in our community. I mean, I want to, I want to also, you know, celebrate the success of it, but, you know, at the same time, you know, these are things that we're learning and and we'll be in a better position to manage and. So and like I said, Adam's done, I I appreciate his support and he's done fantastic about being out there and. Um, on top of these things when I'm not, you know, able to do that and so it's it's been very good teamwork on that part. Well, Tim, do you have any uh council member freezing, any comments? Uh, council member Dominguez, any comments?
Nope. Uh, well, I have a laundry list, um. I'm sort of flushed today with public comments. I've received either via email or in person um. Comments that are all over the board. One, I received via email and it was from an individual that lives, uh I believe in the Iowa City or Johnson County area and. Is gearing up to purchase their first tiny home. And they, but they don't have a place to put said tiny home because. Uh, the state of Iowa isn't as open arms with tiny home. Um, rules and regulations as some other states are, so we're kind of slow to catch up there, but. They reached out and wanted to know what the West Liberty community could offer them. Um, for a possible area or designate for a tiny home. But uh we would have to do some significant upgrading of our ordinances and zoning. Because we don't have anything like that right now, I think um. I think the max space is four hundred square feet. Uh, to be designated tiny home, so anything four hundred and below is is a tiny home, so. Um, even mobile homes are bigger than that, so it wouldn't even fit in a mobile home. Um, kind of template for for rules and regulations. So, um, that might be something to look at in the future, you know, to have an an off, a space offering. For individuals with tiny homes because no other community here in eastern Iowa that I know of furnishes that. Um. For for tiny home builders or owners.
And so a lot of like trendy, trendy, trendiness about the three D printed homes as well. Um, I just read something about it.
Yeah, yeah. There, yeah, yeah, and and there, the four hundred square feet or or two hundred square feet, that's, that is a tiny home, so. Um, but people have ordinances that, you know, um, when you're building a home in that community, it has to be. I'm I'm going to say on an average of a thousand to twelve hundred square feet at least. Um, that it has to be, but just as you said, I mean, even RVs are going to have enough footage then, but. The tiny homes because originally a tiny home was kind of looked at a mobile, like a mobile home, but. Again, the square footage didn't fit most ordinances out there, but I'm sure, um, you know. I will take it with Ken and I's Friday discussions and 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 we'll put that on our list of. Um, items of interest um with a unique opportunity possibly. So that was one inquiry. Um, the other, uh, I also had another inquiry about upgrading or um increasing the improvement of. Wattage, as it called, for the power pole that the city maintains on the corner of Spencer and Third Street. That would be on the northwest side corner where there's a current power pole there and it. It serves a one-ten, but there is um a request to make it a two-twenty. Because we have had events downtown that uh have, you know, whether they're food trucks or music. Uh, venues, whatever, that come through in events and uh they need that, that wattage, so.
Um, and I had spoken to Mayor Proton and um this had been brought to us. Um, several times over the past years and um and honestly, I totally, I mean. It it, the best way to put it is, is that um. It just wasn't within the the scope of the project that the superintendent was. Um. That's a terrible proceeding with, so, um, however, now with a new superintendent, you know, um, I've just forwarded this on and. I'll have the conversation um as the, you know, again, the service that's provided there. Um, you know, it supports our farmer's market providing, you know, and it allows the farmer's market to have an opportunity to expand. Um, it also allows us to expand, you know, if there's live performances. Um, that allows us to move them over to Spencer Street, I think that that would be a nice balance with the downtown businesses, you know, because sometimes. You know, there's, you know, they don't want to have interruption, understanding we want to, but we want to support these local events and. Things that are coming to our community, so it presents an opportunity to to move some of that entertainment, you know, down through the Spencer Street area there, so. Um, I'll follow up with Cody Franklin and then and then touch base on that.
Okay. Um, the next is uh the residents of the Golden Years Complex number one, which is. Clark Street, right next to the railroad tracks, I believe. Uh, they said they have a security light on the premises. And it hasn't burned out yet, but they, like with in the past, when the city had had. Put up security lights, they were maintained by the city, well, that has since changed and we do no longer maintain the security lights. Um, but they wanted to ask if we could revisit that policy, um, because they would like. She, they're paying the cost that was set up, but I think it's, I don't know, six to ten bucks a month or something for that charge. They would like to continue doing that, so I just wanted to relay that message to, as a possible.
Yep, we, I have that over to the electric superintendent and. I agree, I think that, you know, there are situations or there's, there's some areas in our community that, you know, there was a security light put in because we didn't have adequate street lighting or. Maybe it wasn't the street lighting that went in and I know some of them are in alleyways, but this is a safety and a security thing and. Um, so um I will also follow up with that conversation, who I would agree, I think we. I think we made a a blanket decision, but yet, you know, only understanding now that some of those security lights do just exactly that, they provide. That lighting to, you know, secure the area um and and make it safe and so to, to go back around and take a look, a better, a a look at it. And maybe it's not necessarily a streetlight, maybe it's just, uh, I mean, a security light, maybe getting the street lighting that we need to really look at. Since the town is one, so.
Yeah, um, so, so maybe have Cody.
Yep.
Look into that too. Um, the next is uh coming, there's a complaint on from the residents on Sunny View. On Walnut and Short Street. That there's way too much speeding happening on that roadway and they have suspicious characters walking around in the middle of the night. And I directed them to the call the police if they see suspicious characters. Um, so let's hope that they do that, but they just wanted to know if they could have some added patrol in that area.
Yeah, I received that one for the speeding cars out there. Said that there's inspections for speeding cars, but. The system also has people walking up there. I had it for the, the kind of this walking in a down of the night, I didn't see since.
Yeah, it could also be people who are getting off the lake shaft that, that somebody was.
True.
People walking in the night, I mean, if you don't know what. So that gets suspicious, but what's that, we check that out, you know, people that's that that's. Danger to anybody's investigation, walking their legs, their friends, so.
Yeah.
I do remember talking about a possible speed um along that stretch too.
As an option.
Right.
You should go to the same area Mr. Junker came and talked about.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I think um that was a conversation that, you know, that I need to follow up and circle back around some video on it because there had to be. I believe you had mentioned something about the design for the street.
The the main speeding area, there's one west, right, only come around that, that's what people. Like that, so there.
Okay. Well, I, they were saying. Going up to the end of the uh dead end, um, well, that direction anyway. Whether it's the hot, the single family house or the apartment complex that people were were heavy on the foot going up that roadway. So that's just what I heard. Um, and then uh the alleyway between Miller and Clark Street and Third and Fourth Street, there's that alley. Um, this has come up before, uh, the dip between the alley and the the side streets. Has gotten worse and the neighborhood uh cars are bottoming out on that and they want to know if there's something. Asphalt or something that could be poured to to help, you know, rise that up so people aren't bottoming.
Yeah, we put asphalt.
Okay.
Well, don't worry, that'd help.
Yeah.
I marked it out last week, but I imagine all the paint markings are gone from all the water, so.
Oh, okay, so um I can, I can forward you the individuals if you're interested, Adam. Okay. Um, and last but not least, the um, I had somebody ask about the hydrant on, is it Fifth and Miller Street? They want to know what work has been done, if the hydrants, okay, if it needs to be replaced, if they're going to get rid of it or. Apparently some construction there.
I'm sure the hydrant they put in was not working properly.
Okay. So.
We'll work with um Danny and we'll find out what the timeline is on the hydrant.
Okay, okay, yes, and I can um forward you the individual or relay message. Okay, and that's all I have right now. So, is there any public comments from city hall, city manager, uh, city clerk?
Um, Matt, I'm going to have nothing more to add.
Nothing, just, okay. Woo, okay, we'll move on to the next uh new business, line item A, discussion appropriate action by the city council. On the event request for Orange Spiegel Puppet Theater Company that's going to be occurring September fourteenth of this year. Um, I see we have somebody here represents the center. Would you like to state your name and?
Stephanie Lance, one of our town health workers, we're looking for a company, I think, I think that's our name, and we want to have conversations. If you've been aware of us, we're black, we're going to do it.
Excellent.
That's all I have to say.
Um, are you, are you just clo, you're not closing ports or?
It's like last year.
Okay, Capone and third, okay.
Same as last year and this year, fortunately for us, we are not, I mean, like the regional help take us along with it, so.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so um Calhoun will be closed all the day and.
Just from kind of.
Just from kind of.
Before, yes, so that's.
Okay.
And hopefully we just. And we'll spray the bubbles out of the road again.
Okay, is there anything else you require, I see. The same as last year.
Last year, yeah, it's last year. It made everything so much comfier, like when you're our children and they suddenly have to pee and you don't really want to go have the little pills or fudgel or whatever. So it's really, it's really helpful having that, we really appreciate that. We can do to look that into. Really appreciate that help.
Yeah.
Let's see what you got there, kind of making sure that we we need to pay with the business owners, parents and the events up about.
Oh, yes.
So can I make a motion to approve?
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. All right.
Keep in touch.
Enjoy again. All right, next item, uh, discussion appropriate action by the council. On the RFQs for attorneys for the city of West Liberty. Okay, this is getting juicy. So we got, let's see, a couple? Did everybody got a chance to peruse the letters?
So we did receive two, uh, we did um. Uh, we did receive a a follow up from another, uh, Mr. Supple, Mr. Supple um communicated to us. Um, that he is retiring or is not retired officially, so but appreciated, but yeah, he did follow up and. And let us know that he is officially in retirement. Um, so the two that we had before you um is Lynch Dallas and Stanley Landon Hunter. Um, Kirk Cofer provided a really nice outline there, just talking about that. You have their um. Their packets um with their information and and who they're currently serving and their experience. And so, and you also have staff certification with your actual.
Any questions? Okay, does anybody have any thing to say?
I do.
Yes.
Um, just, you know, just between these two. Uh, there's been instances where, you know, both of them have worked with us on different things. I've been a lot more impressed with Lynch Dallas. I've been really disappointed with Stanley Landon Hunter just in the past two years. I mean, in our voucher, we just saw they charged us what? Eight thousand dollars for the litigation, the twenty eight E. And we still don't have an update, so where's the eight thousand dollars? I think the communication has been really poor. Um, and just looking at Lynch Dallas, they have a lot more experience working with cities and counties. Um, on their reference list than Stanley Landon Hunter. And also, I don't know if this matters, but I do want to point out that Nathan Mather is a supervisor that I know of, a county supervisor. So I feel like there's uh if not a legal conflict of interest, perhaps an ethical conflict of interest to continue um. Taking advice from a county supervisor where we might discuss things where they have already um voted on certain things. Um, you know, there was an incident last year with the ARPA funding where. It was just interesting that he was advising us one way that he had already voted on as a county against, so. Just keep that in mind. And that's all I have to say.
Do I hear? I was just gonna say, I would just wanted to add, um, for Stanley and Landon Hunter, when he. When we had taken on on our contract agreement with them, uh, it was at a time where they certainly had. Um, a larger firm of attorneys um that we had available to us and and then we were able to cover, you know, several items. We also had one of the attorneys, Chuck Holter, uh, greatly missed, and I'm sure they miss him as well, but. You know, very well burst in uh municipal government and handle a lot of the ordinances and. I think that, you know, over the years, they they kind of, you know, shrunk their um organization a little bit and so. Their availability is quite limited and just as you're saying, possibly for Dominguez, um. With Lynch Dallas, we have a a variety of attorneys um that we can, you know, lean on and ask things and. And hopefully get a timely response um so we can do our business and.
Uh, yes, I.
I make a motion to approve Lynch Dallas to represent the city of West Liberty.
Second. So there's a motion and second on the table. Is there any other discussion? Comments?
I'm wondering, um, this, this would still allow the firm to complete their project or would it? Like with the twenty eight E or would it be transferred?
So, um. I, I, I would want to have a conversation with um both attorneys. Historically in the past, when we've we've gone through a transition, uh, there's a decided piece of it that's handed off between. Um, the new or it's agreed upon that the existing attorney will finish. You know, the the case or finish what they're in. Um, we already are in an agreement with Lynch Dallas with Dan Morgan. He's the one who is um um assisting in the agency agreement. So, I mean, we already have that lease and so the litigation piece. Um, I think that would be just a further discussion between the, with the attorneys to see how we um. You know, how we, how we move with that to go through. So. Um, again, it's my understanding that we we have a settlement agreement, I just, I don't know. Who makes the move first or what was. So in that transition, I I I'll have that conversation.
And the nice thing is uh is that both firms have worked with us in regards to. The agreement and have been very much um put to task and briefed on what's going on, so. We have that to be thankful for that where one, you know, is at, the other can pick up or. Whatever works out, so.
They're very professional, they work very well together, um.
I've enjoyed uh actually working with both, so, yes. Okay, uh, hearing that there's a motion and a second, no other discussion, um. Is there a motion to approve uh Lynch Dallas as the city attorney? Yeah. Yeah, uh, that's right, all in favor. All opposed. Her motion carries, that's right. I guess that was my way of saying is all in favor.
Sure, our clerk corporate and I will follow up with Lynch Dallas and with Sammy.
Excellent.
And bring back to you what what our next step is.
Excellent, okay. All right, um, we'll move on to line I and C, resolution adopting Juneteenth. As observed holiday by the city of West Liberty under the federal holiday calendar. Um, is there a motion? I'm motion to approve, is there a second? No second? Oh, Omar, got it. Is there any discussion?
Isn't something we do every year, because I thought we did this last year.
We had discussed it with the two of you guys when we had our meeting, but we never brought it back before council would put it into our handbook to adopt it. As the the federal holidays like it is at the state level. So this is just putting it. Into effect in our handbook to make sure that we observe it as a federal holiday instead of just coming back and moving the proclamation board.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, I'm hearing no other discussion, all in favor. Oh, oh, sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Okay, uh, McBarren.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yeah.
Freezer.
Yes.
Martinez. Schultz.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Okay, uh, resolution two oh two four oh five oh seven dash one four eight. To prove pay estimate number twelve from All American Concrete for the Rainbow Maxon Street Project. Um, I entertain a motion. Second, okay, any other discussion? Anybody have anything to say about?
I know council members Dominguez had some questions, um, we directed them over to Leo to about the charge for the. The traffic control and um. And so we did get a, I did get a response.
Very engineering.
Yes.
Response, that didn't make much sense to to me, but I kind, from what I understand. Cause I was looking through the the thing and it said ten thousand dollars for traffic control, ten thousand dollars for mobilization. Two thousand dollars for um. It and I, I guess I didn't understand that this was basically how we had laid it out for companies to bid on. So as like a lump sum.
Yep.
So I guess I should have looked at it closer or I don't even know if we looked at it before the or if we even out, but um. Just for the next projects, maybe for me, learning moment. Question, why ten thousand dollars for traffic control and and to me, it's just cones, but um. It seemed like a pretty excessive, but I think Leo did uh answer my question in the email about it just being a standard kind of. List that the contractors, so they can know what the expectations are and what the cost is.
Um, cause there's also a design that goes into it as well because part of it is, so for example, when you have the rule. Um, so the farm to city road and so then there's a design about, you know, that traffic controls and there's a design about. What portions you're closing and where you're not allowing and then um the closure of the corner um. Of the bar, of the barfield and the entrance and so some of the costs, I mean, it's not just about the the staffing of it. But it's also, you know, the design and how you're going to manage um the the control of the traffic flow too, so. Um, but I agree, I mean, it's just, those are things that when they're laid out like here versus how they're in the agreement. You know, but it it, you know, it's, you don't catch it as moving in agreement as you do when it's laid out in your class. So, um, and again, we can always have Leo, you know, give us more of a, you know, the. The, you know, layman's terms, you know, versus engineer terms on on that piece of it, but. I do know that that, you know, part of it is design on how cost of design and how you're going to do that.
So any other discussion? Hearing none, that's a roll call vote, so.
Doesn't always have to make it.
Yeah.
Martinez. Schultz.
Yes.
McBarren.
Yes.
Mangas.
Yes.
Freezer.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Okay, line item E, set date for public hearing for a budget amendment on the next council meeting, is that correct? Five twenty one?
Yes.
So, what do we got, um?
So you have your budget amendment, yeah, your budget amendment, I I provided, we'll provide it again. Um, but I, that's the publication, um, we'll take time at the next uh work session to go through. Um, so go ahead and read your budget amendment, if you have questions before then, then let me know, but um truly, it's just identifying. Um, the, the cost of the water project that we did not have funded it because we were supposed to be done with wall number two. We, so we had to bring that back in there. Um, also, it is reflective by of the Iowa Economic Development. Uh, grants that we receive for the uh downtown housing and catalysts and revitalization. So we have to show the money coming in and money going out, um, and then, um. And also, we didn't know we were going to have an uh additional police car that we were going to have to purchase. Uh, but the previous chief had stated that there was an emergency we need, so we proceeded to use. Uh, utilize local options, sell us facts to purchase an additional vehicle that we only had a budget for. One, so.
Are we doing six or since thirty on the twenty first?
Uh, well, what do you recommend, how much time, like?
These are two separate things, so what you're doing right now is just setting that public hearing will be at seven thirty.
So that'll be within the agenda, regular agenda, okay. So there's no action for that, we're just setting that, here are the next council meeting. Uh, line item F, set the date for a public hearing for the agreement with Marco Technologies. For the leasing of printers for City Hall Lightery and the PD, um, I keep in mind that is something that we are bound to do. Because for any lease item, I believe, uh, under prior code, we have to have a public hearing. For lease agreements.
Anytime the public entity is taking on a debt, um, you have to uh just like a public hearing for that.
Okay.
So, and I just wanted to say for the city, um, fiscally for us, the lease uh printing machines. Is more feasible than purchasing them outright, um, because you also have to, if you purchase them outright, you're also going to have to enter into a contract for service. This way, if you lease it, you've got the service and then, you know, um, in five years, your your printer is essentially. Out of date and so for us, I mean, again, it's just like with the streets we've already do that we said we meant. Because with the maintenance side of those uh pieces of equipment go through, um, it's just not financially diligent to be used. As this is with the library, the police department and the city.
With this, do we also get like free toner?
We're within our agreement, I mean, we also try to manage, this is why we've kind of talked about printing, because you know, we're, you know. We can't go crazy, but you know, as long as we're within our agreed upon uh amount of prints and color prints and. Usage than not, but if we go over that, then we have an additional cost on time, so.
I saw Allie chuckling, so here it is.
It's, it's not free toner, it's part of the contract, it's part of the.
So like.
We don't have to purchase it every.
Yeah, and just like, and it's programmed, so I mean, again, they they send a message to them, so they know. That we're running low on that toner and that was a part of that contract.
Now, is this public hearing going to be on the twenty first as well?
Yes, it will. Um, I just got the final information that I need, I just. Opened notice for it, so we'll go in the paper next week.
Okay.
We'll have the between four. So we'll be on the twenty first as well at seven thirty.
Okay, good. Um, next is set the date for council work session on the twenty first at six to go over the city council code of conduct. And information and budget amendments and. Are we doing a presentation on housing study or?
I mean, we set it at six, um, because we wanted to provide uh council enough time to work through. Um, that the document for the council conduct and.
Yeah.
Okay, and so that way you can, you know, and if you don't think you need that much time, then that's up to you. Um, again, it's not going to take me very long to go through the budget and then it may be ten to fifteen minutes, but I just want to give you time to ask any questions.
Um, well, uh, if everybody goes over the council code of conduct. Do you think six o'clock? Uh, is enough time or do we need to make that six thirty? I don't know. Is six fine? For everybody?
May well.
Okay.
All right, then, and what we can do, um, the council member Freezer's, um, not here on that day, but what you can do is make sure that he has it and then you can make some notes, um.
Oh, yeah.
Clerk and I can, you know, provide, present that with you, um, there are those changes, and then what will happen is, is that, you know, you get a consensus of a draft and then the plan would be then in that first meeting in June, uh, once you've got what you wanted, we can get it presented to you to, to adopt. Unless we need a little more time on it, but that would be.
Yeah.
That would be the timeline for that.
Well, we can, um, come to work session with all kinds of ideas and revisions and whatever. Additions, substitutions. Okay. All right, then, um, if that's all for new business, then I'm going to go ahead and we're gonna go into closed session, we're gonna enter into closed session, pursue it to Iowa Code Chapter twenty one point five C to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or litigation is imminent where it's just a closure, we'd be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. This is a roll call vote.
Maybe which of them is.
Motion in that closed session. Second.
There's a motion and a second.
And, but, we are gonna go Freezer?
Yes.
Martinez? Schultz?
Yes.
McBarren?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes five.
Okay. Okay, now we're back to open session, um, since there is no action to be decided upon, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor? I, all opposed? Adjourn.